Okay. I call to order the July 15, 2020 special public meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence cell phones, electronic devices, please. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Okay. Members of the public who wish to be heard during the board meeting must raise their hand to speak during the first five minutes today after this meeting starts. So you have up to five minutes to raise your hands to be recognized to speak during this meeting. And I want to say that to deliver this message, that the board respects your views and your diversity of opinions, and we respectfully ask the same of you. Now, we are aiming to end this meeting at 5:30 so that we can tune in to the governor's news conference, and which will be broadcast here. Hopefully, we will be able to end the meeting by that time so that we could watch the news conference. Okay. So just one slight adjustment for the board members, which will allow people in the first five minutes to find out, but I wanted to switch the agenda a little bit. If we could open our meeting with the discussion of the board matters item, which is the tax levy, tax levy renewal discussion, if we could do that first, I'd appreciate it. And then we'll ask Mr. Hoing if you could come up. Just a little background, you all might remember the last meeting, Mrs. Bates raised the issue, the subject about tax levy. And so we were talking about, we started having a discussion about our next steps with that. So Mr. Hoing is just going to kind of put this in context for us and give us some ideas or lead us into a discussion about our potential next steps and any decisions that might have to be made.
Yeah, thank you. So just very briefly, the board has already passed both resolutions that are necessary to put the levy on the ballot in the fall. The board needs not take any other action. The reason that we paused was the board had passed both resolutions, and then the COVID hit, schools were closed, and it was suggested to us that we pause before we deliver this packet of information to the Board of Elections. That's the only step that's needed, and we just need a nod from you to be able to do that. It's important that we do that probably at tonight's meeting, as the deadline for turning those materials in is August 5. I will say, there is a meeting on August 3, so you could wait as long as August 3. I would feel more comfortable and smiling if we made a decision sooner rather than later. But you have, we have until August 5 to deliver those materials to the Board of Elections. Is that helpful?
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments at this time? Mr. Morosky?
So, Mr. Hoing, if we didn't deliver it, then would we have to go through the resolution process again, or would we be able to just amend it for, say, the spring?
I believe we would go through the resolution process again in the spring, just to cover our bases and to be sure we're doing all the proper steps. Correct. And the treasurer reminded me also, we'll have to recertify it with the auditor because the mileage may change. So we'll need to have the auditor re-running them. Well, thanks.
Okay. Just for clarification, you're not asking, Mr. Morosky, if we need the resolution tonight? It's only if we get passed?
Yeah, I was just looking for clarity, yeah, if we just...
Sorry. So what we have to do tonight is, after conversation or discussion, is just say sanction kind of moving forward with the reporting it, right? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think there's two issues, is whether or not we want to put it on the ballot in November or wait until spring. And the other one was whether or not we do what we've done before, as I've been clued in to know now, is our resolutions included preschool promise language or shared vision, if Mr. Hoing could talk about that. But there has been a suggestion that would it be better publicly and politically, publicly and politically, if that were on the ballot language? I have concerns about changing the ballot language, too, but maybe if he could go over that, because this is a huge decision. Part of our reasoning for going this fall, before all this other stuff happened, was that it's a presidential year, and we usually do well, and it's been a popular ballot issue. It's never, we've never had to renew it yet. This is our first time to renew. So there's lots of different conditions that weren't, as you mentioned, in existence when we passed the resolution. And supposedly, there's some polling relatively available that might help shed some light as well. So maybe we can just talk about that.
Can I say one thing about that? On the ballot language, the ballot language is largely statutory, which means the language that you use on the ballot is, comes straight from the statute. It also has to be approved by the local Board of Elections and the Secretary of State. So conservatively, it's always been my opinion that the ballot language is sort of sanct or sanct, and should just be the statutory language that we use. Now, and that's what we used, by the way, four years ago, when we passed the preschool promise levy, we used just the statutory ballot language. To show the public, however, that we had made this commitment to preschool promise, and we wanted to make some public commitment to them, we did a separate resolution with preschool promise. We called it, at the time, the shared vision resolution. And that was the board's public commitment to spend money on preschool and to partner with the preschool promise. In my view, that, again, I would protect the ballot language and just use the statutory ballot language, but then if there's, again, a desire to recommit to preschool promise to do it in a separate resolution.
So that addresses your question about the language specifically. The other question you raised was, we haven't had any discussion or made any decisions around whether or not we want this on November ballot or spring.
Right.
Okay. So I think, so the question is, the language that, the resolutions that were passed back several months ago, was, it was intended, I'm assuming, that that meant we were going to go on the fall ballot, right? So what happens if that changes or anything?
Every official board action that needed to be taken to put the ballot, to put the language on the ballot, has already been taken. And the only thing that's left to do is for us to deliver those resolutions to the Board of Elections. So if that's your desire, we can, we are ready to do that. If it's your desire to wait until the spring, then we'll need some direction from the board on that.
Great. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I think we should deliver the language. I think that...
Say that again?
Sorry. I think we should deliver the language now and go for it in November, is my perspective. Couple things that lead me in that direction are, I'm cautiously optimistic that the public will continue to support what's a really, really important initiative about a fair start for kids in preschool, and that I think they understand that we're living through an extraordinary time, and this is not the time to ask a district to do more with less. And even in the worst case that it doesn't work, you get a second chance. And those things together make me feel like November's the right direction.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts on that area? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I concur. Obviously, the data was pivotal, and I think, as you think about the state of the world, that could have come back very different. I think, you know, it was extremely positive, and given the fact that, you know, we are in a presidential election year, and it typically is a good time for public schools, at least in this city, I also agree with that. And then, you know, we do have a fallback, so the following election, so I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Just in follow-up to Mr. Messer's comment, and Superintendent, you may be able to share information about this, the work group right now is still trying to finalize some of their thoughts and opinions that I believe will be shared with the board at some point, but it doesn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily influence what we need to decide tonight. I'm just...
Yes. So the work of the work committee was to be able to look at polling results conducted by an external group to give the board a recommendation for consideration of going for a levy in November. And so that has been the work of the work group for the last several months. The polling has been conducted, and we have preliminary results back. And the consultants who are working with us on the polling are now suggesting a date of July 20 for the committee to, or not committee, but the work group to meet, to review a more thorough analysis of the polling results. At that point in time, once that happens, the thought is that that work team would then hand off the work to the board to say, this is what we believe is the recommendation or suggestion based upon the polling results. And then members of that team or work group may go away, so then you have the work team who actually comes in and who will do the work, which will be a far more expansive group. So it will consist of three board members from CPS, three board members from CPP, the NAACP, the FT, the CAS, which is the Administrators Association, as well as ASME, and a couple of other people. So it's a more expansive group.
Okay. So that'll be the beginning work, that'll be laying the foundation for the committee work, which is the tax levy committee as opposed to the work group?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so what you need from... Yes, Ms. Bates?
I'm a member of the current task force, and I believe will be reappointed to the levy committee. And we have a really strong coalition of community, of religious organizations, of agencies in this city who are supporting our work and are supporting, if the board decides to go forward, the levy. So I'm in favor also of moving forward in November, because we, you know, we have the support, the district is headed in the right direction, we're going to make the best decisions we can for safety, and that's been really made clear to the community. And I think that we're positioned well for a successful renewal.
Great. So so far, we've heard, okay, Ms. Bowers? I just want clarity, President Jones. So do we have to vote on when we want it on the ballot? Or are we just having a discussion? I think it's like what we've always talked about, this consensus agreement. I think we have to agree right now that that's where we want to go. Okay. Yeah. We don't need a resolution or anything like that. Right. Okay. Does that answer your question? Yes. Okay. So I at least have heard, Ms. Bolton, you have a question?
Yeah, just, it's critical that it pass, and it's good to be able to have, you know, two bites of the apple if something, because of all the crisis around us, somehow people vote differently than they have. I think it's also wonderful that the superintendent and her team have found a way to have a completely muscular and vibrant preschool offering in the midst of all of this. I think that is a very positive message, and only because of the taxpayers supporting the first of the initial piece. So I think that's great. And I think we have to also remember, a lot of, all of this has to do with our five-year forecast and being able, that this is all we're going to get due, I think, in the five-year forecast. And maybe the treasurer can briefly speak to that, that we all passed that 10-year piece the last time we were at the ballot box, and that helped save the five-year forecast, and then all the work that's been done financially during this crisis. And this is a key piece of the five-year forecast, is passing this renewal. And I, maybe if treasurer can reassure us that that's still the case.
Okay. Treasurer Wagner?
Yes. So in the fiscal year '22 is when we would lose half the revenues of this $48 million levy, because it's calendar year versus fiscal year. And the second year is the full value of that levy. And then in the third year, in '24, we actually have another renewal that comes on, the $52 million one comes up for renewal. So we have two levies come up in the next five-year period.
But no new money?
No.
No new money. Okay. So that's helpful to know. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing affirmative, affirmative agreement. Mr. Morosky likewise here, likewise here, to move forward with the ballot language for November. Regarding the language, Mr. Hoing is advising that we consider keeping it the way we had it, but then expand if we need to within the shared vision. So are, any thoughts about that? And if it's just an affirmative, we can move forward, we can just go on with it. Everybody good? Okay. So thank you, Mr. Hoing. Thank you. And thank you to all the people on the work group who sit on that work group here. Some good work, and we look forward to hearing more about that. Okay. All right. So moving on, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Now, because we have been experiencing lots of feedback from the audience, we are asking that you mute your sound and your visual while you're waiting to be recognized. So you can turn on your, you can unmute, and then if you want to be visible, you can turn on your vision screen. And our treasurer, when she recognizes you, then you can come forward. That will minimize some of the background noise that we have. Okay. Once your request has been granted by Treasurer Wagner, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video screen, your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes, two minutes, and we're going to hold firm with that. We don't, we don't, we want to hear your views, but we have to stay within that two minutes. And Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel issues. Thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Zen is our first speaker. Begin Zen.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make sure the very stakeholders that you are making decisions about hear my message. Today's blatant cut of opportunity to speak from 15 minutes to five minutes is an underhanded attempt at silencing the very stakeholders you are making decisions about. And trust and believe it has been noticed that your transparency is not what you want us to think it is. The board prides itself on transparency. I am not sure I can trust in your words, and this distrust is growing into a huge gaping chasm of dangerous risk-taking. I am no longer concerned, I am no longer sad, I am furious. I'm furious because in a time when our students, staff, and communities need us the most, you have chosen to cut the positions of teachers and further widen the academic gap of our future generations by eliminating the very human beings that they depend on to support and advocate for them. I am furious that since the day of the vote for our reopening plan, when you slyly dropped the bomb that 726 positions would be ripped, you thought we weren't paying attention. Well, guess what? You were wrong. I am furious that you are eliminating...
Excuse me. We asked earlier, we want to hear your comments, but we would appreciate the respect for what we're trying to do here. And we did decrease the 15-minute wait because the agenda is a short agenda today. And we want to hear everybody, and we respect your views, but I am asking you to be respectful of the people here. And we understand your anger, but we're not, we don't want to, it's not a fight, we're all in this together. So thank you. Finish your comments.
I'm not sure you understand our anger, and we are not all in this together, because you are sitting on that side of the screen, and we are sitting facing five days in school a week at great risk in our communities. So thank you very much for giving me my two minutes.
Next.
Margaret Lidle? Good afternoon, board. I am a teacher at Dater High School, and I want to thank the board, the superintendent, and her team for trying to work with an impossible situation. However, the situation is not of our making, the schools and the kids, and we did not put ourselves in this boat. It is the lack of local and national leadership, the lack of adequate testing and contact tracing, and the lack of community compliance for the best practices to mitigate spread. Until those needs are met, we must go virtual. Let me be clear, going virtual does not mean that schools are closed. We certainly had issues with it in the spring, but we now have time to learn to do better. It is certainly better to prepare now rather than waiting the two or three weeks it will take to see an outbreak. It is inevitable, so why are we risking it? We, as a district, have been doing a lot of talk about racial justice over the past few months, but we are remiss to have reopening discussions without acknowledging the racial disparities in infection rates. How can we say that Black Lives Matter if we know that a disproportionate number of Black and Brown students will be affected by this disease? More and more schools are pressed to solve all of society's problems, and all for the sake of the economy. I will not resign my life and the lives of my students to be taken by this disease just so that the economy can restart. This false sense of urgency for things to go back to normal is a symptom of white supremacy culture. We must disrupt this thinking if we are going to protect the lives of every single student and employee of CPS. If Hamilton County is still red by August 24, we must go virtual. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie. Go ahead, Katie.
With the suspension of ADE and ADA ask, there will be no students in the building this year. However, there are many itinerant staff housed in the building that work with the students across the district. Please look into the ventilation system at Jacob. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Sonya Lackey. Go ahead, Sonya.
I'm trying to get my video up. Again, my name is Sonya Lackey, and I work at Midway Elementary School, been with the district for 24 years. I am concerned about the riffing. I do believe that this really isn't discussing a personnel issue, but that there are positions at the Board of Ed office that I know for a fact make over $100,000 a piece, and that's being generous with the $100,000. And the teachers that are being let go, I doubt very seriously are making $100,000 each. So I believe that maybe something like that could be looked at again in cutting some of those upper positions rather than the people that are in the trenches. Also, we need to, the plans you came up with and everything are fine and dandy, but we need details about those plans, not just overall blanket statements. We need to mandate, in my opinion, we need to mandate one or two different platforms for the teachers to use, rather than say to each school, hey, you all decide, because we have families that have kids in different buildings, and it needs to be uniform, again, in my opinion. Next thing, I'm very concerned about the cleanliness of the buildings. I have diabetes, but there's no way I dodge green earth, and I'm not going to go back for my kids. And so I would like to suggest that there be some sort of audit that takes place throughout the time that we're doing all of this, and that would be almost like a secret shopper, except a secret checker of, they would have a checklist and go through each building unannounced, maybe the lead secretary would be the only one that would be informed, and they would go through a checklist and check and make sure that things are being done properly. I don't think it's right to have plant operators be responsible for that, for the simple fact that they, nobody wants to look bad, so that there might be a little bit of hiding things.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. Your two minutes are up.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Brooks. Go ahead, Nancy.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. I would like to take this time to ask you to reconsider virtual learning. When CPS conducted its online survey and stated they wanted their children back in the classroom, however, recent comments on several Facebook pages indicate that most parents are not ready to send their kids back to the classroom, especially given the all-or-nothing choice between blended learning to the digital academy. Lack of flexibility and lack of options is disappointing and frustrating to CPS students and families. Even though the CPS survey seemed comprehensive at the time, because of the drastic change in our circumstances, in June, when we took the survey, we had just spent through three months of unanticipated and unplanned remote learning, some of which went well but some didn't. It had also been locked down at home since March and wanted our sense of normalcy. But since the June survey, we have seen a surge in COVID cases rather than a decline. Now in mid-July, parents are riling, school is only a month away, we are nowhere near having a handle on this pandemic. Rather than rushing students back into the classroom when our own country is leading the world in COVID transmission, confirmed cases, and deaths, CPS should be planning how each school can offer both in-class and online learning. Schools and teachers should now be prepared more than ever before to offer online learning in the hands of the students' choice. Every school in the nation should be able to apply an effective instruction using a virtual platform. Let's face it, parents want their kids to return to school, yet some of us are not willing to accept a moderate-risk scenario for our high-risk children to contract coronavirus, yet children need interaction and socialization with their classmates and teachers. CPS has the technology to offer virtual instruction in every school and class, yet it lacks the plan. I am asking the Board of Education to craft a plan for virtual classroom instruction that will offer this flexibility and cruising...
Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Powers. Go ahead, Carolyn. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Everybody there for all the hard work you've been doing, this is an unimaginable situation, and I recognize everybody's just trying to do their best. I did have a couple of thoughts. I wondered if anybody had considered doing a buyout for some of the older teachers. This is, will be my 33rd year with Cincinnati Public. I'm 56-years-old, and I have some health concerns myself, but I'm also particularly worried about my parents who are 90 and 85, and my infant grandson. I realize it would be a big outlay of money initially, but it would save a ton of money in the long run because you would be able to replace older teachers who are most at risk with younger teachers that are less at risk, and you would be significantly cheaper to pay. So, that's just something that I wanted to throw out there. Just a couple other small things. The intent to divide the kids alphabetically, A to K and L to Z, I looked at my class list for next year, and I would have nine in Group A and 19 in Group B, so I'm not sure how well that is going to work. I also know that my school is supposed to go to Echo this year to replace Schoology. I wonder if that's wise, considering that as a district, we're going to be giving out information and content through Schoology. I'm not sure if it's a good time to throw in a new platform. And my only other comment is that I really think that the kids should not start until after Labor Day. Even if teachers go back on the 17th, I think we are going to need that planning time just to get everything together. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me. Our next speaker is Andrea. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hi. Good afternoon. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Sorry. Good afternoon. As many people have mentioned, I just want to thank everybody again for all of the hard work everybody is putting into the reopening, even though we've never closed. I also want to thank whoever was able to give me some answers to some questions that I've been asking recently. It was just confirmed to me yesterday that Cincinnati Public Schools is not an official partner of the Cincinnati Blue Line Foundation, and that our name and logo will be taken off of their website. So, in my opinion, it was good to see that. I also was given some form of our minority and women-owned contract information. I'm hoping to get the why behind these numbers. So, just so the public knows, Cincinnati Public currently has a total of 1,056 outside contracts. Only 108 of those are minority-owned contracts, and 190 of those, over 1,000, are women-owned contracts. However, they are listed in both categories if they're both a minority and a woman. So, I've sent one of the board members some several follow-up questions. I hope those will be answered. We, our union is still waiting on a public records request for our budget. CPS prides itself on transparency and effective communication. If we're being transparent, this information shouldn't be hard to find. I just recently found, due to another teacher in the district, the checkbook.ohio.gov, so I'm happy to see the budget write down on there, but again, we need transparency. We don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we typically do not respond in hearing of the public, but I really feel compelled to clarify this because you've brought this up for weeks in a row. Cincinnati Public Schools is not a member of the Blue Line Foundation. Thank you. Move on.
Our next speaker is Clarissa. Go ahead, Clarissa.
Hi. And like everyone has said before me, almost everyone, thank you all for your hard work. I have true concerns about the ventilation system. We were talking about sending our kids back to school. My understanding is fully connected, and what goes on in one classroom can be very easily spread when you start talking about heating for the winter, cooling for these last few months that will be kind of hot. Those are spreading grounds. Also, virtual learning, we have the technology to do that. Why are we sending our kids even to a little bit of danger when we have technology to prevent it? I know that the platform and getting everything organized, this broke loose, was difficult, but parents, including myself, are now more understanding of technology, and I assure you, more appreciative of what teachers do day in and day out. Warm weather rescues young people to do schoolwork or to keep up is no small task, so hats off to all of our teachers. But I feel like, again, with the numbers still rising in our community, with everyone not always on board with wearing face covering, and children and their family, we're not sure where they've been during the summer months, why would we put our kids in jeopardy? Please consider moving to virtual only and allowing, if you must go forward with teachers meeting our kids in person, allowing those teachers to come back early to figure out how they're going to situate students and how it's truly going to work in a classroom so that they can be best prepared to do the very best job for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samantha Messer.
Hi there. I'm Samantha Messer. I'm a CPS teacher, and I just want to say thank you to the Board for your hard work in this difficult time. I wanted to speak today on behalf of at-risk staff regarding the reopening. When a student has a disability, teachers are required by law to make accommodations that will enable them to learn. Teachers do this every day. So, imagine my surprise when I read in our reopening plan that my options as a teacher who is considered at-risk are to either go to school anyway or to take a year of unpaid leave to guarantee my position the following academic year. If teachers are at-risk, as 40% of teachers polled by our union identify that they are, why would we not be receiving accommodations as such? In light of the students whose parents are opting for remote learning through the digital academy but potentially through their homeschools as well, wouldn't the increased demand for remote learning also mean an increased demand for remote teachers? Shouldn't the at-risk teachers be considered for remote learning positions? Per the CPS website, the Digital Academy staff list shows 10 teachers. This would be an excellent opportunity to build the Digital Academy while serving both at-risk teachers and students with high-quality educational opportunities that meet their specific needs. To ignore the needs of at-risk teachers is going to create a drought of quality educators, and we will be left to cobble together our educational system. If teachers are faced with focusing on our own survival in the classroom, we cannot be effective academically or in addressing the emotional well-being of our students. Right now is the time when I would be preparing for next school year, and I haven't done this because I can't focus on creating academic outcomes from a place of fear and anxiety about my own survival. Teachers deserve to be accommodated by CPS as much as our students do. Thank you for your consideration of my comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Susan Gregson.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my- My name is Susan Gregson. I'm a resident of Cincinnati and a professor at, a math education professor at UC. While the COVID-19 crisis has resulted in the disruption of children's education across the world, the impact of this disruption weighs most heavily on the laws of low-income permanent goal, the very students that make up the majority of the CPS population. As an experienced math education researcher, I strongly object to the district's proposal to riff teachers, any teachers, especially those in the math and reading specialist position. At this time, the district needs more, not fewer, experienced teachers to support the learning needs of our children in this district. We're not being realistic if we think that doing more with fewer teachers will provide students with the support they need to both be as safe as possible and learn. Quality education would not happen without highly-trained and experienced educators. These are essential workers, like nurses, police, and other workers, and they need to be not only retained, but supported and accommodated, and we need to do as much as possible to listen to their expertise. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mara Sampson. Go ahead, Mara.
Hi. My name is Mara Sampson, and I have a four-year-old who attended Dater preschool last year and is enrolled to go back next year. We had an excellent experience. However, this upcoming school year, I don't feel comfortable sending her back in person. My request is for Cincinnati Public Schools to offer an alternative to preschool families that still allow my child to remain enrolled but not physically attend school next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ala Karim. Oops.
Good afternoon. At 2:00 PM today, I received an unsettling email from CFT. Teachers were made aware, last minute, of district plans to eliminate Microsoft Office classes, math specialist positions, high school reading specialist, instructional coaches, and district-wide mentors. The district did not consult with the union in planning for these changes. I am respectfully outraged that the district can purport to have students' best interests in mind for this school year while making drastic cuts to these crucial positions. Any lip service made about fostering a supportive learning environment for our students can be categorized as false. While I'm aware and appreciate that some positions will be shuffled into open vacancies, the fact that these positions, positions that are crucial to student growth and learning, are being cut in the first place perfectly exemplifies what teachers of this district know to be true. The decisions being made on our behalf are informed primarily by funding and our budget. They're not informed out of the interest of the students. They're not informed out of the interest of our educators. While it is no fault of the district or school board, I'm compelled to condemn a system that dares to make cuts to crucial institutions such as education that leave us all scrambling in a time of emergency, leaves our district to weigh whether putting thousands of people in immediate danger is worth it if it saves our funding based off an archaic system that is measured by students in seats and has effectively pit our district and our school board against us. This shouldn't even be a conversation we're having. Meanwhile, the Cincinnati Police Department's budget is being increased by 0.4% from $151.7 million to $152.6 million so they can have the distinct honor of continuing to brutalize the citizens in this community while protecting capital. If that doesn't make you livid, it should. Further, I'd be remiss not to acknowledge the irony that in a time when increased safety measures are being put in place and increased responsibilities are being asked of our educators and administrators and our school board, in a time when we need all hands on deck and absolutely need more, we're making cuts. How on earth are we expected to ensure a safe, secure learning environment with less? While that's a rhetorical question, the educators of this district would sure like a concrete answer. Let me pivot back to our current reopening plans, plans ostensibly made with student interest in mind.
Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Seibold.
Hello, born members. Can you hear me? Just checking. Hello?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you. First of all, thank you for all the work that you are doing. It's not an easy position to be in, but I still have several questions. One, if student's start date is still August 24th, what about those schools who are slated to get their devices up until August 31st? Two, we teachers are to go back the week of the 17th, but with all the information we need to obtain and process, along with measuring out classrooms and common areas in the buildings, will we really be ready to receive students only five days later? Three, I appreciate the promise of receiving sanitizing supplies so it doesn't come out of our pockets, but how are you going to ensure to have enough for each building and classroom when it's still tough to find those products on our own? Before the stay-at-home order was put into place in March, we were promised sanitizing supplies then, and all we received was one spray bottle for four classroom teachers to share. How can we be sure it won't happen again? Four, what about masks? What if a student doesn't have one, and we are constantly having to give them out? Eventually, we will run out. And what about students who refuse to wear one? How much will it be enforced? Five, what if someone in the building ends up testing positive with the virus because they started having symptoms? Is the whole school on shutdown, and for how long? Will it be mandatory that everyone, staff, and students get tested, or will it be based on only those showing symptoms, yet knowing there have been cases of those who are asymptomatic and still have the virus? And finally, would it not be safer to start the year virtually, and as the numbers start to decline in the county, then open back up to in-person? I miss the interactions with my students. I never went into this to be a virtual teacher, but I'd rather be safe than sorry. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Lindsay. Go ahead, Lindsay.
During today's Speak Up, Speak Out program, Superintendent Mitchell mentioned the teacher shortage, the fact that people just aren't going into the field of education. There is a reason we are not listened to. Superintendent Mitchell, you are a teacher. I know you feel this. I heard President Jones during the last board meeting when she spoke of the anxiety and fear she's experiencing over these decisions. I heard Mr. Murawski when he said he still holds reservations about going back to in-person teaching and learning at any capacity. My coworkers and I are exploding with anxiety and anger that we were not consulted on how we would like our future to look. As it is so often the case, I and my colleagues are not asked and not heard. The fact is, up until now, we wouldn't allow our students to go to school without first receiving vaccinations for diseases that are nowadays hardly a threat. Why would we change this now when this virus is so deadly? We also have a concern for our students' social, emotional welfare. I understand this and will argue, how will it impact my students if I die? Two years ago, a teacher that used to work at my school passed away from cancer. Immediately, my school had to call in the response teams to help navigate and counsel my students' feelings and trauma, and they hadn't seen this teacher in two years. If you think living through a pandemic and being educated from home will negatively impact our students, think about how the loss of their teachers, friends, caretakers, etc. would affect them. Our students need us alive, and our profession needs every last one of us. Referencing the emergency color coding system and being adaptable is not enough. We must offer our students some level of consistency, and committing to a remote system is the only way that that can be done. Opening and closing based on the flow of the tide is not providing our students with what they need. I know in the spring, many teachers were out delivering food packets, ensuring that their babies had what they needed. I know these acts of love will continue in the future. We just need time and consistency to perfect our craft online. It is unacceptable to command us to choose between our lives and our careers. One thing we do as a district is hear the voices of our students, take into account their experiences and their needs, to form the best educational environment possible. Speak Up, Speak Out is proof of that.
I'm sorry. Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ernestine Morris.
Hello. Thank you for listening. I just have a couple of comments. As a teacher, I think that the plan as we have it now is really complicated. I think for parents who have multiple kids in multiple schools, two days a week, three days a week, the logistics of it is just really complicated. I know that we're exercising an overabundance of caution. However, we have to remember that low-income students have parents who are essential worker parents. They've been the Walmart workers and the truck drivers, and I think that we, as essential personnel, as teachers, have to consider ourselves the same way. I've noticed that we have testing sites open now for CPS, and it seems to me that it would be simpler, or it would be at least an option, to test our personnel so that we have a baseline, and then go back to school as much as we can. I don't know how a single parent with five kids in five different grades in three different schools is going to have, is going to work this out. So, I just wanted to put that in there because I'm speaking for equity. Everybody doesn't have the ability to keep their kids at home, and I know, speaking for my students, remote learning did not work. It did not work, and remote learning as little as possible is what I would personally recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole. Is it Feely? Nicole? Go ahead.
It's Feely. Thank you. Hello again. I am Nicole Feely, and I'm a teacher with CPS. At a time when teachers should be focused on planning their lessons for the upcoming year, we are in-stud, making sure our wills are in order, checking our life insurance policies, considering getting long-term disability insurance, making sure our doctors have our end-of-life care directives, and creating care plans for our elders and children in the event we have to quarantine separately or infect die. In South Africa, 98 teachers and 1,800 students were infected when schools opened in June. In Dayton, a daycare outbreak resulted in a third of staff and- In Dayton, a daycare outbreak resulted in a third of staff and students contracting the virus. In New York, 64 school staff members lost their lives. In Florida, over 7,000 children have tested positive. And now, thanks to data coming from France, we are aware that children can contract COVID from inside the womb. There is ample anecdotal evidence for why we should be starting the school year with remote learning. And I urge the school board to reconsider opening the schools before Cincinnati Public Schools becomes its own cautionary tale. I would like to finish by saying that perhaps teachers would have more flexibility with their decisions about whether or not to return to school. If a lack of resources in our schools did not dictate that we devote so much of our personal income towards creating robust learning environments for our students, we should, however, be able to draw the line at sacrificing our lives. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Julie Sellers.
Can you hear me okay? Yes. Okay. I'm going to keep it very short this evening. Would love to start out by saying that teachers do want to return, but they want to return when it's safe and they want to make sure that their students are safe and they and their colleagues are safe. What we have needed throughout this entire process is more transparency, better communication. We need to make sure that there are, there's more transparency and communication about staffing decisions. And we need more clarity and multiple options for employees who are vulnerable so that they are safe while they, if they have to go to work, or if they don't feel safe going to work and they are in a vulnerable population, that they have options so that their only two options are not either you go to work or you take unpaid leave. That's like saying you risk death or you have to... Should not be the only option. They have, teachers have sick leave that they have accumulated. Teachers save their sick leave for rainy day. And this today is the rainy day for teachers to use their sick leave. I understand the additional costs, but we are in a pandemic and hopefully this is a one-time shot that is going to just be for this school year, or maybe hopefully less than the entire school year. But teachers need options, just like families were given. I think that we need to say that there could be retirement incentives to increase the number of teachers who would, who are, who are not really ready to retire, but this may give them an extra incentive to retire. One is not 65 years old and they have sick leave. They should be allowed to use that. And we also need to make sure that we are providing more virtual options because some teachers need to have the, according to ABA. These accommodations could be done very easily, even for the students who are coming to school since they are only in school for two days. There could be some teachers who are working virtually to provide services on those alternative ways when students are not in school. But we do need to have that option for teachers, especially our younger teachers who have not built up time and still have medical vulnerabilities. The teacher cuts that made, I know that it was only, it was set, 14 teachers were ripped, but in actuality, we had 119 teacher positions that were frozen. And those teacher positions were moved into existing vacancies. And many of teachers were just told yesterday and today, and some of the teachers have been a math specialist that the teacher, the district has invested thousands of dollars into for them to get certified through CBMI Math. And now they are being placed into a high, a middle school or intermediate ELA, which they have never taught. I don't think that the way it was done was done fairly. But what bothers me the most of all of this is that the cuts that were made, and I was given these cuts, I was given this information last week, but it was already printed as if it was a done deal. It was already, it was a summary that I was provided. And we, to cut double bell math, math specialist, high school reading specialist, Microsoft cats, those are all cuts for student supports. And then we cut instructional coaches, we cut district-wide mentors, we cut alternative learning sites. But what bothers me is it's almost as if there is no value that's been put on, on providing supports for new teachers or teachers who may need extra assistance during this time. We don't, we won't even have any coaches that teachers can call on. District-wide mentors in the spring will work, night, working with young teachers, answering questions, helping them to figure out the curriculum and, and teach it online. All of those are going to be gutted with these cuts.
Ms. Sellers, Ms. Sellers, I, I know you don't have a time restriction, but if you don't, we, we really are trying to get through so we can watch the, the line news conference. So I'm just asking you to please be aware. I mean, we, we really do want to hear you, but if you could just kind of close out your comments as soon as possible so we can move on. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And I know this has been difficult for everyone and it is very last minute, but we need to give some sort of reassurance for teachers on what will be their ability to move back into a position. They've taken leadership positions and now they were just thrown into buildings without any consideration. And we just have to have a clear and, and more transparent communication for every teacher in the district. And I think that that would help to relieve some of the anxiety that we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. We thank the members of our audience for their comments. And we are going to move on with the superintendent's report. Yes, thank you, Board Member Jones. So last week, when I gave my report, we talked about the need for being agile. And if there's ever a time for us to be agile, now is the time for us to be agile. And I don't say that in a disrespectful manner. I've heard all of the concerns that have come through from teachers and from parents and from other staff members. Each meeting, I've taken copious notes and then had, had had the opportunity to go back and work through some of the suggestions and the concerns that came out of these conversations. And we'll be putting into place some additional measures to help people feel more secure with the return whenever that happens. I do want to make sure though that we're very clear that there are sometimes comments about the plan that aren't accurate. So the board has never made a decision to go back five days a week. And that was stated today and that is not the case. The board's decision and approval is around a plan that calls for two days one week and three days another week with the health and safety of our kids in mind as well as the adults, making sure that we can lower the classroom sizes to be able to have the six feet of social distancing. So the board has made extreme attempts at putting safety of our adults and kids in mind as they also consider the, the requirement that we have, the responsibility that we have to provide an educational system that is making sure that our kids are meeting with academic success. So having said all of that, our system has to be agile because at the end of the day, we are in a pandemic. This is an extremely hard situation for everyone, for all the teachers and staff members who are nervous about going into a building. It's also very challenging for central office and all the board members who sit here. So no one has taken any of this lightly, but at the same time, we do understand that at some point very soon, we must find a way forward. We must have a viable school district that serves our students and our staff and our community. So staff, I would like for you to roll in, for you to hear very clearly that we will take a lot of caution in terms of the return. We are analyzing on a daily basis the information that comes out of the Hamilton County Health Commissioner and City Commissioner and looking at the data of COVID cases and the deaths by county, by city, by neighborhood, and by zip code. In terms of the staffing that's required for digital and the possibility of staff members who are in compromised situations to go and teach at digital, that is a possibility. So on a daily basis, we are also analyzing and looking at enrollment for our digital academy, be able to have the appropriate staffing in place. Very soon, we will be announcing that we will be holding sessions with staff members, round hall meetings by grade level so that we can lower the number of people to be able to actually have dialogue and have conversation and ask questions. So during the hearing with the public, the board and the administration, we don't usually respond to questions, but that would be an opportunity for teachers, for pair professionals, for all of our staff members to be able to ask those very detailed questions that are burning in your mind so that we can make sure that we have a plan in place for when we open to address your concerns. So we appreciate your comments. We appreciate productive comments that move us forward and help us to consider things that we haven't yet considered. And thinking about a way moving forward, and we are excited about a way to move forward because it's what we need to do. We were in crisis mode for such a long period of time that we needed to make a shift towards the future. And we also now need to make that, again, a shift towards the future, a future of return and a way forward that is a productive environment for not only our staff members but also for our students. At the same time, we are experiencing budget cuts. There are budget cuts coming from the state in terms of reductions and state funding for schools, in addition to the delay in property tax collection, in addition to the increased cost that we are seeing related to the pandemic that exceed the CARES Act funding that we have received. So unfortunately, the district is in a financial strain. This is like many other companies and organizations across the United States and more specifically across the state of Ohio and even more specifically this county as well as this city. The leadership team took many, many days and many hours poring over the budget and looking at ways to reduce the number of risks. So, I mean, it is with a saddened heart to bring and make a recommendation to displace people out of their jobs. And so please understand that these decisions were not made lightly, that we took a lot of time and care to try to be able to lower the number as low as possible. And I do understand that low is relative. If you're being a person who's ripped, then low doesn't mean much to you because you're the person who is not working with CPS any longer. Also, I'd like for you to know that the first thing that we did to lower our deficit was to look at contracts. We wanted to make sure that we could address our own staff and take care of them. And so we looked at our vendor contracts. Over 1,100 contracts, we looked over three times and we made cuts each time, be able to cut millions of dollars out of the budget to preserve staff members to provide services for our students. So our intent to provide, to preserve our staff, it was not only for our staff, it was primarily to make sure that we had services in place for our students. We have been able to move from the initial thought of several hundred reductions to over, under, I'm sorry, way under 100, under 50. Again, I understand that one is too many if you're part of that one. In addition to reducing and suspending some of our vendor contracts, we also eliminated many positions that were vacancy. So understand that how we were able to get the number down was to be able to reduce our vacancies, not only within our schools, but a lot of vacancies here at central office. Though a lot of comments have been made that central office hasn't been hit and that, quite honestly, is not accurate. There are a lot of positions that were cut from central office, had a lot of work that will not happen to support our schools as a result of the deficits. All of our central office departments made, made their cuts to their departments to be able to provide service for our young people. At the same time, we also had to look at departments that quite honestly needed to increase their budgets to be able to meet the new demand. So for example, our ITM department made some cuts, but you'll also see some increases in their budgets because they needed to be able to provide technology for our young people in the event that we have to go to a remote situation. So again, we do not take this lightly, the decisions that were made, they were very hard decisions to make. We are also analyzing very carefully our situation if we start off remote and if we stay in a remote environment for a long period of time. If we are in a remote environment for a very long period of time and/or if we lose enrollment, we will not be able to maintain our current level of staffing and so we will unfortunately have to make additional cuts. And so again, it is with great sadness and reservation to be able to make these recommendations for ripping our staff members. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Morowski.
I was just curious on the total number that, that is in the recommendation because I heard under 50 and then I heard 100. I just wanted to be, have clarity on what the total number was.
Yes, I'm going to ask Paul McDull to come forward. So tonight we have 14 and then we have some additional administrative positions that will be coming forward at the next board meeting, which is August 3rd.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Exactly what Superintendent, Superintendent Mitchell said, we have 14 this evening on teachers and then we will have some administrative riffs that will be brought to you on August 3rd.
Thank you.
Can you say that number on, for August 3rd, please?
Six.
Say, say that again?
Six.
Six.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. Mr. My, Mr. Messner was first and then... Okay.
How many teachers?
14.
14.
Yes.
That's in your report.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Mr. Messner.
I just wanted to, I'm, I'm sure this was kind of already part of the thought process, but just given where we are, who knows what we're going to find out at 5:30. You know, back to some of earlier, I was even concerned about go back or not go back at kind of a couple, several meetings back. I have to say that I'm less confident looking at the data as of today, your friends talking about kind of what's happening within our hospital systems, et cetera. So if, but we haven't really talked about yet kind of that dashboard that says kind of our go-no-go. And I know that's still, you know, and for every workplace, everybody's working through this. So for all of our people listening, it, it's just the way of the world right now. But wondering if kind of the order of kind of the decisions and what impact that would have to this plan, if we don't go back, are we, are we still in need of making this change? Or do we need to make that decision first?
Yeah, so first of all, I want to address the dashboard. So we are probably maybe further along than what we have articulated. I didn't want to overpromise. I'm going to ask Sarah Trimble Oliver to come up. And so the dashboard that is being developed will have city data, it will have county data, it will also have the information by zip code. Then it will have data for each one of our schools, number of confirmed cases on a map. So you'll see the entire district and you'll see on a map, red, yellow, green, in terms of the number of confirmed cases, the number of sicknesses and as well as containment for each day. So we have been working with Children's Hospital and we were actually on a call with them today and we discussed that we are going to have a... today, and we discussed that we are going to have a, when we return, a morning huddle at the very beginning of the morning with the board's leadership team, as well as the DSLs who support the principals, so that we can make sure that we have the information for our buildings, be able to know where we are with each and every one of our buildings in terms of red, yellow, green. We are going to hire nurses, registered nurses for all of our schools, and they will be the safety managers for the buildings, and we will be required for logging this information into the system, so that we will be able to track this data on a regular basis. So actually, not a regular basis, but literally from morning to afternoon basis. And the premise around that is that Children's Hospital has said we need to be able to act quickly and be able to solve situations very quickly, and know what to escalate up to a closure situation. The tough thing that we are, we have experienced, as like everyone else, we have asked, I have asked countless of, countless physicians, "Help me understand, what's the lever to say no, let's cut it off and stop?" And no one will give me a concrete, definite answer. And so today, I asked Children's Hospital if they would consider joining with us and developing an advisory committee of scientists, medical physicians, who we could talk to on a regular basis. And we say, "Here's what we are seeing in this school today, help us identify go-no-go." Because at the end of the day, that's not our area of expertise. And so we are further along in the development of this system and how to put safeguards in place for our families, as well as our kids and our staff members. On August 3, we had a scheduled walkthrough. Someone mentioned a secret shopper. We already had that planned. The first series of walkthroughs won't be a secret shopper, but members of the leadership team and I will be walking buildings. We have various, we're elementary and high schools, from the standpoint of the student and the standpoint of a staff member. So the moment I hit the building, what is my experience? The temperature check, the masking, the classrooms, the signs on the floor, the signage on the walls, the hand sanitizing stations, the kits, the cleaning kits, all of these things we're putting into place to ensure that when we go back, we are ready, be able to receive our people in a very safe manner. There, I'll ask you to give comments. I apologize for stealing your thunder, but I'm very passionate about this because I understand the severity of this situation in terms of precautionary measures.
So yeah, so Superintendent did cover all of the main points. The dashboard will kind of be a central portal, which will give a glimpse of the city's dashboard, the county rating system that's put out by the state, as well as our own case counts by building, by trend over date, as well as our staff attendance, which will go into consideration. We'll also be able to monitor our enrollment on the same dashboard. We're aiming to have that dashboard live with updated, real-time data by August 24. In the meantime, because the superintendent needs this information at our fingertips, we're building a temporary manual dashboard that will be updated once a day, so that she will have it in the meantime before the real-time feed is active.
And to the extent that we can make the dashboard public, this will be a public dashboard. However, there are some things that we can't divulge in terms of health-related, too very specifics. But we understand how important it is to have the trust and the confidence of our families, our kids, and our staff. And so our intent is to make that a live and public dashboard for people to be able to see.
Okay, follow-up question, and then this, we have questions from Ms. Bolton, Mr. Murawski, and Ms. Jones.
Thank you. And just, so the follow-up, so that is, I love the idea of the advisory board, the scientific side, because, you know, again, as you said, that's not our area of expertise to amalgamate all this data. And so, you know, we can hypothesize of, what's the governor going to say today? Will we be purple? Will we be red? You know, I think we just have to build that agility to say we're going to make a decision, but I think we also have to call a date, because it can't be the first day of school, because families need to plan, teachers need to plan, you know, all of our staff members need to plan. So is there a date that's been identified on the timeline that we can publicly communicate that we will kind of have that go or no-go conversation?
Yes, so with our 15 project plans, we reviewed all of them yesterday, and almost all of them have due dates for August 3, because I need this in place. So I'm preparing for the best-case scenario, which means we open on August 24. So I need everything rolling along for that. But we're also preparing that if we cannot open with our remote learning, that we're ready for that as well. So I would say that we need at least two more weeks of data, and we want to be able to hear what the governor has to say this evening before we could say we are, we're going to go or we're not going to go. We have developed a decision matrix about whether to open, not what, which, what would be the lever to say we would open, but then also, what's the lever if we opened to say we would close? And so we've sent that to some physicians to be able to review that and to give us their feedback on that as well. And so I would say within the next two weeks, what I don't want to do is prematurely call it, we're not going to go, and then things change and we are ready to go. I want to make sure that we're ready to go in August, in the event that we can.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind board members that we did say we wanted to hear the governor's press conference, but this is important, and we are going to finish our meeting, so we're not going to forego that. So I just wanted to be sure. But Ms. Bolton first, and then Mr. Murawski.
Thank you. In the name of transparency, it would be very hard for people listening to figure out how we went from, you know, several hundred or more to six. So it actually makes it look as though it was not a real number in the first place. So I do think that the administration needs to explain, in part, that we have that many riffing, we have the how many moving into different positions, how many people didn't we hire, so that, because that, I think that would be helpful. And then also on the remote piece, look forward to the superintendent being able to tell us just how robust, not today, but very near in time, how robust that has become over time. And I was told, teachers might be quarantined if indeed their students have had contact, but they're not ill. There's been many things of the infrastructure, technology-wise, that teachers have the capacity, at least in many instances, to teach from home if they are not sick. I mean, there are really, I mean, this is remarkable from where we were in the spring to where we're going, but we can't even think about remote until we have these things in place. But if you just a general more outline of personnel changes, I think that would make sense to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Murawski.
Thank you, President Jones. So two things. One, again, not for now, but maybe in a next meeting, and I think it's appropriate now, even though it's kind of for Ms. Wagner. And that is, so I'm not a benefits expert, or any benefits, or insurance, or any of this. There are so many different new things because of the federal government and the CARES Act and the state government. If I could just like see a document of what all the, like, if employee gets sick, this can happen, or if employee leaves, because there's so much. And I understand it, but I would just love to see like a cheat sheet type of thing. And then the other one is, and this is something I think I might understand, but if it could be answered, super high level, when we talk about if we were closed for an extended period of time, and I'm just thinking, I think everybody here knows, I don't have faith we're going to be able to open. I don't have faith in Americans to actually take this seriously. And I get concerned when I hear we're going to have to have really, really deep cuts if we're closed for a while, and I'm trying to figure out why that is.
Yes, so I'm going to ask Paul McDull to come back, because actually, in terms of benefits and the decision-making tree, in terms of what teachers or staff have access to, that really falls under HR and not the Treasurers Department. So I'm going to start off in answering Portman, Bemmer, Bolton's first question, and then go to that, if that's okay with you. So first of all, on August 3, we have planned to do, we have a board, a safety plan update that we want to be able to give to the board, that will also help give the rationale for a go-no-go. So you'll see where we are at that point. And we'll talk about the dashboard and all the things that we're going to work through over the next couple of weeks. So in terms of how do we go from this number that was given, 700, down to the number that we have, we didn't cut as deep as we could. And so what I'm saying is that if you think about half of the kids will be back, but we left pretty much the full complement of staff in place to be able to get the protocols in place with our kids and with the adults in a safe manner. So let me, let me be a little bit more specific. So in a classroom, if you're at the primary level, you can have 18 students, and then the 19th student is the lever that allows you a paraprofessional overload. The classrooms with only half the kids there will not be an overload status, but we left the paras there. So really, we could have cut those positions, as well as security, as well as some clerical, because of the number of students who will be in the building. So what we tried to do, as much as possible, is move positions, people into existing vacancies so that we could save as many people as possible. What I'm saying, though, is that if we are in a remote situation for a long period of time, I won't be able to justify keeping all those positions, because I won't have work for all of those positions. I'm keeping them in place to put precautionary measures in place at the beginning of the year to make sure that we have everything done well. We worked out a formula in which each school would get X number of operational paras to be able to make sure that they could do the safety protocols, but at the end of the day, we just did not feel that was enough, nor do we feel that was the right thing to do. And so we made cuts in other areas, more contracts, and more central office, so that we could preserve as many of the services for our kids on the health and safety side. And so that's how we went from a really high number. But if we went based upon the number of kids who are in the building and a formula, we could have cut, we could have ripped hundreds of people, but we decided not to do that. We moved people into different positions, and I'm going to ask Mr. McDull to give more specifics. I will say that what is really driving the rifts, it's the reduction to the budget in terms of funding, it's the revenue, not to the budget, it's the revenue, reduction in revenue, and the five-year forecast, which drove the cuts that we needed to be able to make in terms of dollar amount. That's what was driving our work.
So to give a little bit more detail, and I think the theme was, when we made the pivot from what Superintendent Mitchell said, and then having to find more reductions that we could make, we went to look at those teaching positions that were outside of the classroom environment. So again, none of us, none of us enjoyed doing this. However, positions that the district-wide mentors, the coaches, the math specialist, the double-bell math, the Microsoft Office, that accounted for about 119 positions. And so what we were able to do was, on a shift, be able to take those positions, eliminate them from the schools, and then take those bodies, those teachers, and then move them into vacancies. And then, at the end of the day, we had, tonight, that we, that you, that we presented to the board, there's 14 people that we don't have positions for. Mr. Murawski, in regards to your question related to benefits and the extension of healthcare and FMLA, you are exactly correct. There's been numerous changes and provisions that have been made up until December 1 of 2020. I anticipate that'll probably be extended. We have a visual that I'd be glad to share with all the board members, but kind of high level, there's four different categories. If you yourself have COVID, there's, then there's leave policies for that. If you are having to care for your child because of not having daycare, there are leave policies for that. And then there also is the vulnerable category as well. I'd be glad to share that with the board.
That would be great. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, Superintendent.
Can I just, how, on any given year, how many people do we usually hire?
The last two years, we've averaged over 300.
How many people are we hiring this year?
This year, we're hiring, we'll be at about 130.
Okay, so that also helps explain the number piece. We're not expanding the workforce greatly, but instead filling particular vacancies or departures. So that helps bring that several hundred into better perspective, I think, for the public.
Yes. In addition, there were unfortunately many contract offers that we gave to new people that we had to rescind to be able to preserve the current complement of staff.
Yes. So I guess maybe I'll close it out with a very short comment. A lot of what I've heard, and I think all of us have heard over the past several weeks, are concerns expressed largely by teachers about the nuts and bolts. And what I am hearing, you know, I've been participating in different forums through Zoom or whatever by invite, and I am, I'm hearing the same concerns about things like, what would a day in the life of a student look like? And you described some, some of that was talked about tonight. What would a day look like for teachers? What are all these things? So I'm saying all that to say, given where Mr. Messer, Mr. Messer's comment about the dashboard and you guys monitoring that regularly, and the fact that people are interested in knowing more about the how-tos and what's going to happen and all that, I really appreciate that you have started, your team has started to work on communication of these kinds of things. But I did want to make a point, and the town halls are so critical, especially because of the format, Q and A. I do want to add that, and people have heard me say this before, we're concerned about all kids, but I think especially in the communities of color, the level of anxiety about whether or not to send their kids back is elevated because the data is talking about the disparities in that. So I would hope, I would ask that we particularly look at that, and when we're doing these town halls, to really hear people. And I've had some people ask me, I mean, things like, well, what's the difference in virtual and digital? So as the surveys are going out, people are saying, "I don't know how to answer this," because I don't know what they are or whatever, but basically, they're concerned about their health. So, and a lot of the other issues have been addressed already tonight. So I'm saying that to say, in closing, that I like the idea of the engagement piece with the Q and A, Q and A. So we look forward to hearing that. And so if there's, if there's nothing else, let's, let's move on. If there's no more discussion or questions, Ms. Wagner, call the role.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No.
Just pick anybody. All right. Roll call, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Okay. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, having no other business, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Get the TV on.
Did we make it?